Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the April 16th, 2019 regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We have a full house tonight. We have a lot of recognitions we're excited about. After we do the recognitions and after we do the Superior Performance Spotlight, we will take a brief break. If you'd like to exit, that is a good time, but we ask you stay for the duration of all the recognitions to be polite. If you would stand for a moment of silent reflection before the pledge. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is a beautiful night out there. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tom, a second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, first off, our recognitions with Fonda Harrison.
We have no equipment this evening, so we're all going to...
Good evening and welcome to our board meeting tonight. This is truly the most exciting part of the agenda, is the opportunity to recognize all the fabulous accomplishments in Forsyth County schools by our students and also our staff. So, the way it works is I'll call your name, depending on what it is, I'll share a little bit of information about the recognition and staff or students. You will stand and come down the side here on your right, my left, and come across and shake the hands of the board members and Dr. Beard, our superintendent, and then you can go back around and have a seat. Okay? So, we'll start our recognitions tonight by recognizing John Drake from North Forsyth High School. John here? John, if you'll come around. John is the Georgia Class 7A Boys Solo Literary State Champion. He also at North Forsyth High School is involved in chorus and drama since his freshman year, and also after graduation, he intends to pursue a career in music performance and pedagogy. Congratulations, John. Next, we have Paul Watkins. Paul here? Paul, if you'll come on up. Paul is being recognized for being the Georgia Class 7A Wrestling State Champion from North Forsyth High School again. Paul is a four-time state placer, only the third wrestler in school history at North Forsyth High School to achieve this accomplishment, a three-time sectional and regional champion, and a two-time All-American. Congratulations, Paul. We also have Sophia Eckleian. Sophia here? I'm thinking she was unable to be here.
She has a lacrosse.
Okay, all right, so... Sophia Eckleian is actually the first Georgia female wrestling state champion, and she's a student at North Forsyth High School. She won all four of her matches by a pin, and she's the first female wrestling state champion in Forsyth County schools' history, and she had to win the sectional to qualify for state. And this is her coach, Travis. Another North Forsyth High School student to recognize, Haley Galbraith. I think Haley's maybe not here either. Is Haley's coach here? All right, Mr. Chaney. Haley is the Georgia State Champion for Swimming, the 50-yard freestyle event. She also received a silver medal in the 100 Butterfly. She's the second swimmer in school history to win an individual state title in swimming, not the team, but an individual state title, and she broke her own school record with a time of 23.74 seconds. Congratulations to Haley. Now from... The South Forsyth Middle School, HOSA, Organize TSO, if you'll come up. All of those students come up, and also Julie Smith, their sponsor. We're going to recognize these students, and it's easier if you just all come up at once and then we'll get you through here. First on my list, we have Evan Barnhart for first in health education. Evan? Next, we have Suhani Bandari, and Suhani was first in extemporaneous health poster competition. Gabe Cordova, first in health education. Next, we have Mantar Epikayala, first in health education. Next, we have Anisee McCarthy, first place in nutrition. Okay. Next, we have Shira, I'm sorry, I'm not saying that correctly, Shira Garetti, first in healthy lifestyle. Next, we have Shirkonk, Thomasetti, first in health education. And next, Shavak Venkateswaran, first in health career exploration. Congratulations to those students. Our next recognition is for the Foreign Language Association of Georgia, Teacher of the Year, and we have from North Forsyth High School, Anna Surich. Next, Forsyth County Schools Counselors of the Year, one from each level. First Elementary, from Big Creek Elementary, Kate Rounds. From Middle School, Otwell Middle School, Ashley Cozy. And from high school, Karina Spurlock, from Denmark High School. And one thing I feel to say for each one of these, that in order for them to have these accomplishments, whether it's our staff members or our students, there are a lot of you that support them in reaching their goals and gaining these accomplishments. So, for those of you that are here to support, whether it's a student we've recognized tonight or an adult, please stand so that we can applaud for you. Now, we have our Advanced STEM Certification for Otwell Middle School, and to represent Otwell Middle School tonight in this recognition, to receive this recognition, we have Principal Steve Miller, Assistant Principals at the School Auburn Cavini, Beth Holder, and Jenna Black. And then we also have, from what Mr. Miller says, five teachers that were the driving force for several years for Otwell to meet this accomplishment. Tasha Roth, Natalie Pass, Jessica Jacobs, Kelly Klein, and Kristy Hastings. And let me also say, this is really exciting, because we are the only school system in the state of Georgia that has an advanced certification within a K-12 vertical team with Whitlow Elementary, Otwell Middle School, and Forsyth Central High School. Those three schools are all in the same vertical team, so congratulations. And now for our Employee of the Month. I'd like to thank Jimmy Nix for being our sponsor for this program. Our Employee of the Month this month is Katie Newman. Katie, come stand right here while I say... All right, so just comments from some people for Katie. She has made a significant contribution to raising the awareness of the importance of total wellness by creating a podcast series, sharing wellness stories on Wellness Wednesday, and bringing together a broad range of school, community, and parent resources. I believe Katie exemplifies someone who is reaching, as our Rich Employee of the Month, for the betterment of our students, families, and community. Someone else said, "To say that Katie has accomplished, to say that the work Katie has accomplished is impressive, is an understatement. She has created an amazing resource for our students." When many said that will never happen, Katie's comment was, "I have a can-do attitude," and she did. And lastly, from the next person, Katie promotes taking care of ourselves so that we in turn can take care of others, especially the students we serve. Congratulations, Katie Newman. So that's all of our recognitions for staff and students. Now, we have our Superior Spotlight Performance, which is Drew Hayes and ACE Academy.
I look this way, right? Sorry, just making sure. Thank you very much. I'm the Principal of ACE, which is three different programs, and I hate to say this, but sometimes people confuse us with some other organizations. So I'm in charge of Forsyth Academy, I'm in charge of Gateway Academy, and then lastly, I'm in charge of Forsyth Virtual Academy, which will be the focus of what we're talking about tonight. When I was named to this position, I was asked to kind of steer this in a direction for a five, 10-year period of time, what we wanted to see happen, take an analysis of where we were, and then decide where it was that we wanted to go. For me, with FVA, virtual is the largest growing medium for learning in the world, period. And so, in that regard, our students, our programs are also growing at that same capacity. But it was to be able to sit down and make a determination of how to do that in a scalable way that could continue to have high quality throughout, and then also to develop classes that were going to be engaging, that were going to be relevant, and we're going to prepare kids for the world that they were going to be facing. In that capacity, a couple of the things that we sat down to do and after our research throughout, made some decisions to bring in some people that I wanted to be content creators and teachers, and the three people that we had to do that are right here. Kalen Stevens, who is doing health and personal fitness and also a wellness course that she's developing. Carrie Beth Reikowski, who is in charge of all things, there's sort of STEAM, STEM, coding, et cetera. So she's done Intro to Digital Technology, Computer Science, Computer Science Principles, and then also, of course, game design. And then Daniel Barks, who's over all things social studies. When we were sitting there trying to decide what we wanted to focus on, for me, it became, first and foremost, our kids need to be healthy and they need to be well. That's where Kalen stepped in. Second, one of the things that really influenced us was Thomas Friedman's work, The World is Flat, and he talked about the two codes, and the two codes were this. First, American citizens needed to understand the Constitution of the United States backwards and forwards so that they understood their rights, their freedoms, their responsibilities, so they could adequately engage in government to steer our country moving forward. That's where the Government and U.S. History course come in. And then, secondly, that coding was the new medium by which everything that we did would be developed moving forward, and that's where Carrie Beth went to come in. These people are much smarter than I am, so I am going to turn these things over to them and let them give the presentation at that point. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for giving us an opportunity to come and speak with you all about what we're doing at Forsyth Virtual Academy. We're very excited about it, and as we talked about how to deliver this, we thought the best method would be exactly how we deliver this to students, and that's with its learning. So, that's what you're seeing here, is sort of a Crash Course for Forsyth Virtual Academy of how we're trying to build courses for our students to better engage them. And we'll start off with a video just to sort of introduce what we do. Welcome to Crash Course FVA. My name is Daniel Barks, and I'm the Social Studies Content Specialist.
Kalen Stevens, our Health and Personal Fitness Content Specialist.
And I'm Carrie Beth Reikowski, Content Specialist for Technology. We look forward to teaching you all about the cool things happening with Forsyth Virtual.
So some of the things we'll focus on as we present this evening is the Content Specialist video we just watched. We'll also take a look at the goals that we have for Forsyth Virtual Academy moving forward over the next three to five years, as well as some of the challenges we face in doing this, and then also taking a look at some of the amazing things that Ms. Reikowski is doing with gaming. So some of our goals as we look to accomplish all these things that you just saw in that video... But some of those goals, as we look to that three to five-year outlook, is first, creating consistent formatting in organization in its learning courses. Part of that happens with what you saw, the development of that course that we're using tonight, and what we call learning pathways, which is new to its learning, which sort of guides students from each step, which is really important in the online environment to help guide students through the process, since they're not a physical teacher there with them.
We're also looking at, if a student is taking more than one course in FVA, that each course is going to look consistent, so they know where to go and how to navigate each of the courses, which is a really important goal for us.
We also want to streamline data management, communication, workflow related to student enrollment, as well as progress monitoring, and we're doing that with a new program that we brought in called Genius, that is helping with that enrollment process and communication with parents as well. Our next goal, and probably one of the most important ones, is developing a positive culture for the overall program and taking care of kids, building relationships. One way we try to do that, for example, in my course, even though it's high school students, is I send home a newsletter each week to parents and guardians with exemplar work from students, so they can see what their kids are doing, also share what's coming up, so that the parents are aware of what's going on, which I think is an important part of getting sort of buy-in from everybody and building a relationship, not just with students, but also with the parents and guardians of those students.
We also try to create an alternate environment for the kids. So, for example, personal fitness, this is obviously a graduation requirement, and when they take it in the base school, some of them have anxiety about being in a classroom like that. It's not fun for them, they don't learn much from it because they have such anxiety from it, and so we want to create a positive environment online by giving them things to do that way and that way being carried out through their entire life, instead of being anxious about it. We want it to be a positive experience for them.
Our next goal is to continue to develop quality courses and innovative, engaging curriculum that empowers students. One way we're doing that in the United States History course that has just been completed, students created podcasts about World War II topics that interest them, and I thought there was no better way of getting them interested in World War II than having them pick something that was interesting to them. So I had students that did podcasts on medical practices during World War II. I had students who did podcasts talking about specific battles, as well as military equipment that was used, because it was what interests them. And another student that did music during that timeframe and tied in those. And what's amazing with those podcasts is not only were they built for the students who went in and critiqued and provided positive feedback to each other, but they also pushed those out to the world, right? And the students are sharing their thoughts and their ideas with the world, and I think that's what really education is all about in this age. And another thing that students are doing is building websites as well in United States History to share content and collaborate with one another, so trying to just do things a little bit different than a sit-and-get approach where they read, watch, and then take a multiple choice quiz or a test, right? That doesn't engage students, so... Next is that relationship piece, building relationships with not just our students, but also the base school staff, including counselors, administrators, and support. Some of the counselors that have been here this evening, I've recognized from going in and seeing some of our students and working with them, and trying to build that relationship, because we want to continue to support the base schools in what we do and do everything we can to help those students be successful in our courses. We also want to build relationships with FVA teachers. We have lots of adjunct teachers who aren't up here that aren't full-time FVA, that they pick up courses and teach maybe in the evening time after school, and we want to support them with what they're doing in their courses and also build relationships with them. So for example, this summer, we're going to do a professional development course with our adjunct teachers and talk about some of the things that we're showing you guys this evening, like that Bitable video with the cool music and Apple Clips that we introduced ourselves with, and also things like NearPod, which is new to the county that we're using here this evening. So we want to make sure that our adjunct teachers are on board with that and using it in their online courses, which will also benefit their brick and mortar school courses. Our next goal is to offer unique courses, things like game design that Carrie Beth is creating, wellness that Kalen is creating, and then also collaborating with Georgia Tech with computer science courses. We also want to provide a self-paced option for students as we move forward, that provide more flexible timeframes. We have a program called Edge Annuity that would allow students to go in and complete courses on sort of a different schedule than, say, the FVA courses with its learning, that provides students with a more like two-week model, complete these assignments. This would be an opportunity that even provide more flexibility for students as they go through to complete their online curriculum. And then our last goal, and then again, this three to five-year outlook that we're looking at, is to provide FVA access to students outside of the county, to open this up, the curriculum, the amazing things that we do here in Forsyth, to students around the state of Georgia, which would be a big push and big move moving forward. And I'll pass it over to Kalen, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the challenges we face.
So, with FVA, we still have some obstacles and challenges that we're facing. So, the first one we're going to talk about is its learning, which is our learning platform. There has been some functionality issues with its learning, but we're working very closely with them to try to overcome those issues and work with them, mainly because we've always used it in the county for support in the base schools versus a complete online course for students. So, we're really working hard to make it a great experience for the kids through its learning. Little things like aesthetics, making it look really interesting to the kids, those are some of the things that we're trying to overcome with its learning. Relationships, this is a huge goal of ours, and it's also a huge challenge. With relationships online, obviously there's some challenges there. We want the kids to feel engaged. We don't want them to feel like they're on a computer in a room by themselves. So we're trying to build courses that really help the students in that way. One of the things we're trying to also is to train the students to how to communicate online to their teachers, to their students, which we all know carries out throughout their entire life of communication. A lot of students are used to communicating online through Twitter or through social media, and so we want to teach them how to do this in a proper way for an online environment. And so also with that, we want to build relationships with the base schools so that they know that we are working together to support students. With growth comes staffing needs. We have definitely a need for more content specialists and also a need for counselors to help with student support as we grow, that's going to continue to grow also. We want controlled growth, because we want to put out a quality product. That's been our main goal from the very beginning, is making sure if we're going to put a course out there, it's a great course. And so, we don't want it to grow so fast that we're not able to keep up with that as far as quality. So that's really important, that we have a quality product. And with that is time. When we build these courses, it's not overnight. It takes a long time to build really great, quality courses, and so although we want it to be done today, it takes time to really make that a quality piece of work. And then just general awareness of FVA, it's great that we're here tonight to be able to bring awareness to it, but even in the base schools, again, that we're working together to support... But even in the base schools, again, that we're working together to support students, one of our major goals is to close the gap as a county for the graduation rate. And I really think this is one of the ways that we can do that. And so just as schools that we're working together to help support students and also just that they know this is an alternative to a program like GAVs or other online schools. So and what's great about us is we have teachers in the county that are teaching. So we want kids to be able to have that support from the teachers in the county.
Okay, so you've heard the relationship word pretty frequently in this presentation. And how does that look in an online environment? Is that even possible? So I wanted to share a quick story about one of our students. His name is Alex. And he is a student from North who found himself at Gateway and was taking my online class, Intro to Digital Tech, which is a starter level computer science class for high school. And he has since moved to Forsyth Academy. And he's still in my virtual class, but since my office is in the same building, he stops by frequently. And this morning, we were having a talk about a project for our class. And he mentioned, I asked like, "How's your art class going? I know you're still taking one at North." And he's like, "Can I show you?" And so he pulls up this picture of this bird that he made that looks like it could be in a museum. And so I said, "Alex, what are you going to, what are you going to do when you're out of school? Like, are you going to be an artist?" He said, "I want to be an architect." And then he mentioned that he used to make all these worlds in Minecraft, which is a computer game. And he said, "I've started doing Minecraft again. Like, can I show you?" And he did. And he has been building this whole brand-new world for Minecraft that he started picking up again recently. And I don't even know how many hours this took him, but it's incredible. And his goal is to be able to push that out in the world for other people to be able to enjoy and play. And so knowing that about Alex, I told him, "We have a game design class through Forsyth Virtual where he can actually do this and build a portfolio of things like a Minecraft world." So knowing things about students is a really easy way to connect them with opportunities for them that they might not otherwise know about. And I want to talk a little bit more about gaming because you might wonder like, "Why do we have kids that are playing games in school? Why are they building games?" And I could talk all night about this, but I'll try to be fast. For me, game design is something that I have taught, whether it was sixth grade science or middle school engineering, and now high school computer science because it shows so much student voice, creativity. It's just really cool to watch the projects as they progress. It is cross-curricular in every sense of the word. There is technology, there's coding, there's engineering design, there's science and math and all, everything that you do with a game. In terms of gaming, it's also just a super easy way to reach students because that's what they love to do is play games. In terms of the industry in Georgia, we had 110 game studios a couple of years ago in 2015. And now we have 160 already. And that's very quick growth. So did you know that esports is a thing? So there are professional gamers who make money and are on TV playing video games. This is for real. And our kids love it. Like, they go online and they watch streaming of esports all the time. So for me, I feel like we need to continue to develop that interest and plug them in through school as well. When students are gaming, I know that we kind of feel like that they're just staring at a screen. They're not. They're interacting. They are communicating and they are involved in teamwork. So it's not just like a passive TV watching sort of thing. Gaming also overlaps with virtual reality because that same software that you use to develop a game can be used to develop VR. So it's a really exciting field for kids to be in and it's really cool to watch what they make. In terms of the skills and things that you can develop when you know how to make a game, obviously the coding, but also there's arts and animation, storytelling, machine learning, artificial intelligence. A lot of high-demand career fields rely on skills that you can build through gaming and game design. So I want to share some of my favorite examples of games that students have made, whether it was through Intro to Digital Tech or the actual game design course. So this first one that you see is for Games for Change, which is a competition through Georgia Tech where students developed a game about endangered animals, in this case tigers. The second game is about plastic pollution. The other one is an interactive fiction story, again, about endangered animals. In terms of collaboration, one of my favorite projects was with Coming Elementary, where the younger kids developed a storyline and also the artwork for the game. And then my students put it into Unity 3D software and they created an actual game based on the kids' artwork. That was super fun. Gaming is also fun because you get to see student voice. This game up here is Awkward Adolescence, where an introvert has to navigate a party by dodging people. It's like my kind of game, for sure. Help Hungry Hank is a game where you have to feed Hank a bunch of pancakes, like, very quickly. And then we have an app that a student made about animals and flashcards. Students did a machine learning project where they trained Pac-Man how to play itself. And then we've had students who made physical therapy games. So as you can see, these kids are really smart and they're incredibly talented. And it's really cool to see what they can come up with. In terms of the future of game design, especially the class, just game design, not IDT, we really want them developing more virtual reality type projects. So below you see an example of what one student has already started creating, a 3D world that started out as like a complete blank slate. So it's really cool what they, what they can make. And then our challenge is just with that is that it requires a lot of very specialized equipment in terms of the computing and the VR headsets to be able to make this stuff. And then we also just need continued IT support. But overall, I hope that you can see that when you build relationships with kids and try to relate with them and connect with them, they can do incredible work. So we're super excited about what we're doing at Forsyth Virtual and thank you so much for listening to our stories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on for a second. They might, they might have a couple of questions for you if you'd hang in there.
I'm just so impressed. This is not the kind of stuff that we did in school back in the day. And I really like the way you started out with relationships and being in touch with the parents because I see my child working on a computer and I don't know what she's doing. And what I asked her the other day was, "Well, they're not going to tell you." So if you're staying in touch with the parents, they're going to have a better idea and be able to support them. So I really like that you're focusing on all aspects. Tom, you've got to have something. This is technology.
I just want to say thank you to you three and because I think this is what makes Forsyth County Schools so awesome. And you guys are being proactive, you're innovative, and you're addressing the needs of the future students. And I think one of the things I noticed with all those games is that they have something to do with something that's going on in our world, with humans, with the environment, and they're addressing that through gaming. So I think that's pretty neat. So thank you for you guys for all your help you do for that.
Yeah, it seems like we're at a bleeding edge right now, even though we should be further down the road, right? I mean, the world is changing to this kind of work. I mean, I've worked in many companies where I'm remote. I could be anywhere in the United States working with somebody and they don't know where I'm at and it doesn't really matter. It's coming to that understanding in what that is. And what y'all are doing is changing the face of education and how we deliver it because they have to deliver it to us. And good luck with working with Georgia Tech. I sat with the dean of computer science about 17 years ago because I had an interest in perspective, being up here on the board, understanding what we do up here, going for some coursework down there. I'm just trying to keep my technical skills up. They did not know how to deal with a remote student. And so I had to go down to the campus to work with others and collaborate. That's just not right. So and he didn't want to hear it, you know? And I said, "So we've got to change it." And they were just starting into gaming at that time. But I'll, I'll share one last thought. Last month, I spent judging with First Robotics. And I was able to go out and talk to the students that were building these robots and have conversations about autonomy and AI. And what are you doing? Are you doing that in your robot? Their thinking is still that I want to be in control. I want to put a camera on it. I can control it with driving it. But we convinced them pretty quickly that putting programming code inside that robot and letting it do it is more accurate. And listening to them made me think of the autonomous vehicles that are coming and the world and how it's changing. That's where we're at. We've got to start getting that thinking out there so that new world can come so that the future workforce will be what y'all are doing. So I thank you for what you're doing and we'll keep working. And I expect Drew to bring you back, not just for a spotlight, but for some important updates.
We need to go over there. I'd like to go see. I'd like to go see in action.
Yeah.
Well, as you can see, Mr. Hayes has hired three of our trailblazers in Forsyth County Schools to really get this work started. And I think one of them made the comment about controlled growth, which is absolutely what we're trying to do because we want to do it really, really well. We want that quality to be there. We want our students learning in the virtual environment to have a very similar experience to those students in the brick and mortar schools. And I think with the courses we develop, we can say that we're doing that. Fitness, last summer, we had, what, a thousand students take the fitness course?
Almost 700 seats, yeah.
700 seats. And I'm sure that's going to be very popular again this summer. We have about 1,400 students now taking virtual courses in Forsyth County. And this is absolutely going to grow and expand. And it's another opportunity for us to give kids flexible choices in how they, they learn, which is really a critical important.
And being that this is where the world's going, I would expect us at some point to have at least a course that every student takes through FVA. You know, maybe just one course, but that course, give them a taste of what's out there and the way it's going to happen. Give them the chance.
If we do it as well as I think we're going to do it, we probably won't even have to make it a requirement. I think they'll come because they want to be a part of it. And I think that's what we're seeing is more and more students are finding this is an excellent pathway. Maybe not full-time. We have, what, about 100 full-time virtual students now, but at least taking a course or two here and there, and it's, it's going to grow.
All right. I got two more quick thoughts. I do want to agree with you. My daughter took the health and PE last summer. And she's, you know, freshman, typical girl they are. They don't want to be in a gym class. And it has made a difference. She still now regularly gets on the treadmill and does things that she didn't used to do before. It's just almost become part of her life now. So I think you're right. That has made a difference. And I applaud your idea of doing the social studies, still sticking, we're modern technology, but we're still doing the basics of our U.S. Constitution. I think that is just imperative. So applaud you for that as well.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We will take a brief recess now. If anybody would like to step out before we get to the business portion of our meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Tom. Any more discussion, anything? All in favor? That is unanimous. Next, we have a presentation to discuss in Inspire by Joanne Jackson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. We didn't have any public participation, did we?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Joanne Jackson, Assistant Principal at South Forsyth Middle School. And I've had the privilege of working alongside other assistant principals in the Inspire program under Joey Perkel. It's been a wonderful opportunity to really focus on school improvement. And tonight, I want to present to you how I led our school to focus on our countywide literacy initiative with a particular focus on academic discourse. But as I show you this work tonight, it's not what I led others to accomplish that I want you to focus on, but rather how I led them. Buy-in. To engage others in important work, one must first establish buy-in. To do so, I presented our leadership team members with this excerpt from Fast Company. It established and affirms the need in our workforce for literate workers. I also reached out to Scott Evans of our own Forsyth County Chamber of Commerce. And he said, "Our ability to change our situation is only limited by the effectiveness of our ability to communicate with those around us." Ms. Poson of the City of Duluth says, "Now more than ever, it's critical to write and speak in full grammatically correct sentences, to make eye contact when communicating in person, and to practice active listening so you can respond appropriately." To ensure that everyone is engaged in work that focuses on the target, a firm definition of the focus is important. I presented this definition of academic discourse to our leadership team members. Academic discourse elevates student thinking when they support their own views with evidence, compare research, and make more complex nuanced arguments. Likewise, students will benefit from hearing peers challenge and defend their views. Collaboration. By including others into a conversation that honors multiple thoughts and ideas, excellent work can be achieved. Therefore, I discussed with our leadership team ideas about a plan to visit classrooms and obtain baseline data to determine how much academic discourse we were already using. Shared leadership. Effective collaboration led to shared leadership. Essential tools were brainstormed by and created by our leadership team members, including the development of an app that was used to tabulate classroom observation data using cell phones. Research-based. Excellent work has strong foundations. Therefore, the leadership team members set out to look for specific academic discourse strategies that were proven to have a high efficacy rate based on the research of John Hattie. Targeted. I designed a targeted plan that enabled leadership team members to observe classrooms and obtain data from a specific balance of classes, including different levels, grades, and subjects to accurately reflect our school. Data-driven. After all the data was obtained, I took time to do a deep dive into the data and see if it answered any questions. Such questions as what strategies were used most and least? Which subjects, grade levels, and use them more or less? What were our glows and what were our groves? As I shared this data analysis with our leadership team member, it caused quite a stir. There were surprises both positive and negative. It got everyone talking and spawned a lot of action. Offers choice. By leading collaborative conversations with the leadership team members, I jointly developed a plan to limit our focus to three areas: math, special ed, and sixth grade in general. Teachers in these three areas were then invited to attend targeted academic discourse professional development sessions. Personalized. These sessions were planned out and implemented by utilizing an existing resource. Kayla Duncan, our personalized learning coach, led these sessions. After all, academic discourse is very personalized. And this time, we were actually personalizing the learning for our teachers as well. As you can see here, there are three math teachers participating during their grade level planning time. We kept the session small and intimate. Honors time. If you honor people's time, you earn their respect. So I asked Kayla to limit these sessions to only 20 minutes. Purposeful. I also directed Kayla to ensure that the teachers could immediately use what they learned after spending time in these sessions. So she carefully studied the curriculum map for each grade and subject and presented strategies that were aligned with current standards and learning targets. Hey, this is Joanne. I'm leaving you a voice message because I really want you to know how very excited I am that you're participating in today's personalized sessions of professional development. You know, it's this type of learning that I've always wanted to see because it's short, purposeful, suited for what you teach, it provides you with something you can use, and it rewards you for taking the challenge of trying something new. I really want your feedback after today's sessions, but I refuse to send out another form for you to fill out. So please, share with me your brutal honesty and opinions in any way you prefer. Just let me know what you think. Here's looking toward a great day, and I hope you all have an awesome weekend. As you can see, conveying my enthusiasm for this work was important, but it was also important to me to ask for feedback because feeling valued and important drives people to achieve great things. And in so doing, I valued our employees' emotional well-being as part of this project. You can see that it was effective because 40% of our teachers You can see that it was effective because 40% of our teachers who attended these sessions implemented what they learned within just five days of that first session. Follow-through. One of our leadership team members became very involved. She made a lot of graphic designs and forms that were part of this process. The form that you see here was given to teachers at the end of their professional development session, and they automatically, right then and there, committed to a date and time when they were going to implement the strategies. This enabled us to do follow-through. Rewarding. The same teacher designed several different rewards for the teachers who participated. Here's a sample of four of them, and it is most exciting to me to share this with you because this is a very new and unique way to reward and also follow-through and track implementation of professional development. As you can see throughout this project, there were many new opportunities for several educators to step up and lead. Isn't this the most important part of leadership? It is the most important thing to me, and I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you not merely what we did, but my ability to focus on the key qualities of leading people to do excellent work. What I'm asked to work on will constantly evolve and change in this field of education. However, my solid understanding of how to lead excites and energizes me every day toward my goal of becoming a principal in Forsyth County schools. Thank you.
That was, I really liked the way you, the 20 minutes, and that was aligned to their standards they were working at the time. It just seems like they could actually learn something and go apply it. It's just not force-feeding, but just making it so much easier for them. I think that was really genius.
The positive feedback that we got from that was really phenomenal. We've had subsequent sessions since that first session. We've done a second round, and the response has been overwhelming. Each day I get emails from teachers saying, "Hey, I implemented, and here's my proof of it." They give us a little bit of evidence that they actually implemented it by sending a picture or a handout or a slide from their presentation that they used with their class to really prove that they used it. And teachers are feeling very respected because their time was valued and because the work was pertinent.
Nobody dreads 20 minutes.
No, right. Well, and you can absorb it, and you can actually apply it, so.
And the emphasis on the follow-through. I just wanted to commend you on that because sometimes in professional development, if you don't have the follow-through, then did anything really get gained by having the professional development? So really making sure that happens and people implement what they learn.
Right. Quite often, we kind of go with the model of spray and pray. You know, we put it out there, and we hope that everybody's going to receive it. And a lot of times in general, even with the literacy project overall, the district visits all the schools and gets a broad idea of what needs are there. But it's important for each individual school, like we did, to really assess, wait a minute, where are we at? We don't have to start at the very beginning and give base-level instruction to the whole group, but rather we need to focus on key areas where we can improve and grow and become even better.
You have those three areas. Do you see yourself next year maybe changing the areas and continuing on with this process?
Yes, definitely. We just started with those, and quite frankly, what we want to do next year is we want to go back and see if the percentages of use have increased. It's kind of a tricky thing to do because you don't want to do it at the end of the year. You don't want to do it right at the beginning of the year. So we're going to wait a little while into the year and kind of have a sneak visit. I didn't share with you that the initial visit was done kind of sneakily also. Our leadership team members went into classrooms and just said, "Hey, I'm on the leadership team. I want a more broad perspective of what our school is like. I'm going to sit in your class today. Do you mind?" Teachers had no idea that the data was being collected. They still don't know to this day. And hopefully, we'll do the same thing.
We won't tell anybody, right?
Well, I think also personalized learning. We're trying to do that for the students, and we should also be doing that for the teachers.
We need to model. We need to model what we want and what we expect.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Greiner, financial report.
Good evening. Hard to believe we're already at the end of March. Stay next month, we'll be talking about budget.
Oh, boy.
There we go. Beginning to wonder. First report is a statement of cash receipts and disbursements. You see, we started the month, almost 128 million down to 111 million at the end of the month. Again, normal trend there. As we mentioned, we get the bulk of our property taxes in December, November, December. So this is a normal trend. Of that 111 million, we have 75 million invested in either treasuries or towards a fund one. The other 35 million is in an interest-bearing checking account. The fund one and U.S. Treasury money is earning around 2.3%, 2.4%. And you'll see later on, we actually had about 180,000 in interest for the month of March on that general fund money. So that's definitely, that'll start trending down, of course, as our cash balance does. We actually had to move some of that money during the month of March. What we're trying to do is capitalize, even like if it's 10 days worth of interest like we did this month, just moving it back. And that fund one gives us that flexibility so we can move money back and forth. Next report is our revenue detail. See, at the end of the month, basically same spot we were at last year, about 83.56%. Go to the expenditure report. Again, nine twelfths of the year, we're at 75.31%. Again, those encumbrances, some of those will start kind of falling off as we get to the end of the year. Say for fuel, we may not end up using all that money in some other items as well. So, but we're right on pace where we were at last year. Right at around 75.1 or 2 is where we were at last year. Debt services. No major changes here. Took in 259,000 just in property taxes on the debt service millage. Paid an agent fee that is required with the bonds of $1,000, and then we had our splosts of 2.9 million. What we're doing, what we did with the splosts, and then we're working with our consultant on the cash side as well. We actually invested that in a long, a two-year agency, or two-year U.S. Treasury, not an agency. So we're trying to capitalize on our splosts money as well and trying to build that interest in that we can use for future projects as well. So that's kind of where we're at on that as well. Again, you'll see the investment summary. I mentioned, if you look at the second column over, where we did move that 15 million back to the operating account, and we'll continue to kind of bounce that back and forth. One thing worth noting on the 2018 bonds, I was sitting there thinking about this. We actually earned $293,000 worth of interest on that. So any interest we earned on those bonds has not been budgeted, so that's additional money that we can use down the road for projects as well.
Anything that comes over budget that can help make a difference.
Yes, that is very, yep, great point. No major changes here, normal. I know y'all have had the last several months where we've been spending some of the 2018 bond money, so 4.3 million in the month of March. Of course, those are all approved projects. No other significant changes there. Splosts five, happy to report again, if you look at the very bottom, 10% growth over last year. Last February, we had 2 points. February typically, because of, remember March, they're actually collecting for February, short month. But we had 2.7 million last year and almost 3 million this year. So again, a positive trend. So monthly average still almost 3.3 million. School account balances, no significant changes there. A little over 11 million if you combine elementary, middle, and high school. I'll be happy to answer any questions I might have.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Keep investing.
Thank you.
Next, we have action items. The Forsyth Virtual Academy program change with Mr. Drew Hayes. It's your night tonight. Yes.
And you never want to follow the budgetary, but that's where it is. My recommendation today, and we'd spoken about it at the work session a good bit last week, is to go ahead and make the change from Forsyth Virtual being a school to being a program. Again, the purpose of that being we want maximum flexibility for the kids and the families, and then also the schools themselves. The way we currently have it laid out, students who take the majority of their classes with us then have to be all with us. They can't be then taking piecemeal courses at the base schools as well. I really see us as a program. I really see us as supporting every single one of the base schools as opposed to being something separate. And I think this is a more natural arrangement. The other big piece is that students want to graduate with the base schools. Can't do that if they're taking the majority of the classes with us, especially their senior year. They can do that if they're choosing GAVs, which is causing a lot of students to choose GAVs over us for that very reason. And we want to be able to cut that option, not take that option away, but give this option as well through us. So that is my recommendation.
I would recommend approval.
All right. Wes, do you have any questions?
First, I want to apologize for not being here last week.
Oh, no, it's fine.
But I spent some time over the weekend watching the work session. And like I said earlier, I think you guys are doing an amazing job, and thank you for that. One of the questions I have is, what does success look like? You're making this change. What would that success look like?
For me, it would be both the school and Forsyth Virtual Academy, both having skin in the game for kids' success across the board. So seeing this as a partnership, I think right now, the way the setup is, it's kind of separate. That's an FVA kid. That's not a, that's not a West kid or a North kid, et cetera. And we don't view it that way. We're trying to go into every single building and provide support based on what they need. Your questions, and that was some of the things that Dr. Bearden had forward, just sort of listed out, what you were looking for. I want to see us being able to help serve and fulfill the role of need for whatever that school needs. And the reality is that's very, very different from school to school. Some of them are choosing for their online learners to be in different locations. Some of them are wanting to schedule them differently. And what I don't want to do is put it of, this is our way, and you've got to kind of do it that way. I want us actually in the buildings and working on that. The second is, a key to success for me is I want people like this being able to train other folks so that they're great deliverers of content as well that are being there. So I see this as a professional development arm for us throughout the entire county. Computer science in particular is a high-demand field everywhere. There are almost no teachers that are certified to do this, and then on top of it, the ones that are often are the only show in town. Some are more effective than others. I want us to be able to help support so that any kid anywhere in our county can take whatever class it is that they want to be able to take. And I think that's more natural with this, with this setup.
I think with your leadership, we'll definitely get there. So, but one of the things I was asking is, do you have benchmarks in place? So if you hit 1,000 students, these are the resources you're going to need. Because I like the program, and I think that if we're going to do this, we need to support this for the next three, four, or five years. And so what do those benchmarks look like?
For us, there's no set formula because literally, and this is the beauty, we can actually run fairly inexpensively as long as we have the infrastructure. All a kid really needs is a device or a Chromebook or a place to work. And so what I don't want to do is say, we get this many kids, we need this many computers. Because the reality is, I don't 100% know that because kids will already own or prefer to work with their own device. Some schools are going to have more devices than others, and those type of things. The best way, I guess, I can step into that conversation is what I really need us to do over the long haul is figure out how to get great content creators for every single subject we want to be teaching so that they can support every single person throughout. Where we will also need funding long-term will be, okay, are we competitive in terms of compensating our adjunct teachers? Are we able to attract some of these other, some of these other folks? The flexibility of what we're being able to do and the creativity really is what's drawing people. I think that is what they would discuss. We have, our next person being brought in is math and science. He's a fellow at Georgia Tech right now. He had been a STEM coordinator at Central before he left to go do that at Georgia Tech. He wanted to come back and do this. And so I think the talent and the ability to let the talent go and do that is going to be the biggest appeal. It's just going to be able to provide the support for professional development so they can go other places when they need to, and then just make sure we're being competitive in the market. And we are. I've met with Fulton. I've met with Henry. I've met with Cobb. I like the way that we're structured, and I have a number of teachers contacting me going, can I please, you know, I would like to teach you classes. Is that available? And we're working on that right now.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we have the resources. You need to be successful. So thank you.
Yeah, over the last week, the only thing that I came up with was, are there any rules in our formal, normal school, whatever we want to call the normal schools now, that we have to change to enable them to deal with this student? That's now coming back to their accountability.
To deal with it, meaning?
Well, whether it's attendance, how they attend, it's different.
I think we would continue to keep up with that, and we would work with them on that across the board. For us, the biggest, the biggest change is, how is this student going to go and do that? And for the ones that are the 100 full-time, it's almost on a contract-by-contract basis at this point that we're checking in with them and doing those others. The other thing that we had asked for that was on the list was, we need a counselor. We now have a counselor. Y'all approved it. Kim Haynes from North is going to be doing that, and one of the things I love about Kim is she's worked well with everybody all across the county in various roles. She will be supporting those kids with those schools and those schools on how is this child doing so that they're up to date on where that is. My biggest concern right now is when a kid comes and then decides they want to go back. And in that transition, it's not as smooth because they've sort of gone, well, not our kid anymore. And then it is, it is their kid again, and I would like that to be as seamless, as seamless as possible.
And make sure the school's thinking that way.
Correct, correct. And partnering with them on it, sure.
Okay.
So they'll have a counselor at their base school also.
Correct. As it would go in, they'll continue in, and then we'll also have that other person. And that's going to be one of our biggest challenges moving forward too, is how much of that do we need? How much counseling will we need based on the kids that are there? And right now, that's a hard, that's a hard call to make. A little bit of it is based on the need. What level of need do kids have?
All right. Well, do we have a motion then to change the Forsyth Virtual Academy from a school to a program?
So moved.
Second by Tom, second by Nancy. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
We have C-19-02 copier lease with Brad Richardson. That's a catchy name.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Before I get started, I'll go ahead and say that the results that we bring tonight is, has been a joint venture between tech services and purchasing. In fact, we started this process, having these discussions about last fall sometime. And so it's been a very, you know, in-depth analysis of where we are because it's a very significant contract, which is why we, Mike Evans and I had talked to Dr. Bearden about, just wanted to brief you on it because it's a significant contract in its size and its scope, but in its importance because it affects every teacher, every staff member, directly and indirectly, every student eventually. So I've tried to provide a lot of verbiage here for you. I have no intention of reading it back to you tonight. I'll talk about as much or as little as you'd like for me to. But there are a few things that I would like to, just to summarize. The first thing is this, this contract, even though we've had a copier lease as long as I've been here, shifts, emphasizes a shift in our philosophy. For the longest time, the copier contract has been a separate standalone contract, has not been part of technology services. A decade ago, copiers were basically just a box that reproduced images. As technology has changed and as our delivery has changed as a system, there's now a need to have it more comprehensive print managed program where technology is looking into the printers and how they interact with copiers and how we're managing the technology that drives that overall. So it's a comprehensive print management program. So that's why we've been involved in, this contract kind of passes the torch for technology services, of course. We're there to support the contractual side of it, but from a delivery model, you'll see technology. There are several bullet points here as to why we believe that this is the best contract. We're getting more machines. We're getting a heavier-duty cycle machine. We're incorporating some technology that, like Paper Cut, which drives and dictates the optimization of which machine should be using which printer, some badge control for image control. One of the things that was important for technology services was the ability to do this transition over the summer because it's a pretty large implementation. Our current lease went, ran through December, so Milner, who is our current vendor, as we've negotiated with them, agreed to forfeit six months' worth of lease payments, which is over $300,000, in order to help us get this done in the summertime. So that's been advantageous to us. One of the largest reasons why we feel important, that it's important to stay with Milner as well, is the way they manage the copy center. It's a very important feature for our schools to be able to use that. As well as, in my time here, I would, I could easily say that Milner has been the most supportive vendor that I've dealt with, and I've dealt with hundreds and hundreds of vendors as far as customer service and just their willingness to go above and beyond. It makes it easy for us to stand before you tonight and ask the superintendent to recommend the approval of contract C-1902 to Milner Corporation.
I recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
First by Tom, second by Nancy. Any questions?
I don't know. You know, the strategy of using copiers, I mean, it takes me- You know, the strategy of using copiers, I mean, it takes me back to like the late 90s when I was working with Big Creek to come up with oldest and only, to only send one sheet of paper on because paper was the issue then. And we had, you know, moved a long way from that, but we're still doing this. So I'm wondering, what can we change to get to, you know, electronic technology as opposed to delivering paper anywhere? I know paper's still required in some cases, but sometimes we need to rethink that strategy and make sure we're on the right path with that for our future. But, I mean, this, you know, high-functioning, it's the great copiers, it's things we need to do those jobs. I know we still have them in business, but I've noticed the last company I worked for, it sat in the corner a whole lot more and used a whole lot less. So we have to be mindful of that in the future, but understand why we need it today.
There is no doubt. We are absolutely seeing an increase in assignments being turned in digitally now, as opposed to before, much, much more often, you know, but there still is absolutely a need for what we're presenting today, yeah.
Yeah, I still have to carry one of these around. I don't know what you do with it, but.
I mean, obviously, as students mature and advance, you see more of that in the elementary schools. You have less of that, and so you have a lot more paper use at the elementary level. But as our students go through middle and high school, there's a lot more digital assignments being turned in.
Well, as a parent, I still miss the elementary Friday backpack notes that come home to tell you all the things you need to go and get organized with. I miss that.
Get over it.
And it speaks volumes. You said the best customer service of somebody you've dealt with. That speaks volumes, given the number that you do. All right, and so, call the vote then? All in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chesty Elementary School re-roofing guaranteed maximum price from Carol Daniel Construction. Phil McKnight.
Yeah, that's a long.
In January, the board approved Carol Daniel Construction as the construction manager for Chesty Elementary work. Tonight, I'm here to recommend that the board approve the guaranteed maximum price for the Chesty Elementary School re-roofing for construction manager Carol Daniel Construction Company. As a requirement of the contract for the approved construction manager for this project, Carol Daniel Construction submits a project's guaranteed maximum price of $3,899,250.
Recommend approval.
Motion by Wes.
Second.
Second by Darla. Any questions, thoughts? All in favor?
Needs a new roof. It looks like it's going to be a big project.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a big one. Thank you. It's unanimous. All right, points and information, Dr. Bearden.
Just a couple of things that draw your attention too. If you look at the monthly attendance report, we are closing in on 50,000. We will reach that sometime this summer, no doubt, and probably when we start the school year, it'll be over 51,000 students. Also draw your attention to the Education Foundation update and continue our support for the Duck Dive for Education. The goal is for the Education Foundation to raise $200,000 with this first fundraiser that they've implemented since the inception, and I'm really excited about it. It's a really an easy thing to do, and it's an opportunity for someone in our community to win up to $10,000. So the drawing will be, I believe July 4th is the date on that. So again, please support our Education Foundation.
So you're saying you want us to all be Quacker Beckers?
I want you to be a Quacker Becker, for sure.
All right. I bought my duck. All right, do we have a motion to go in executive session for land acquisition and personnel?
So moved.
A motion by Tom, second by Nancy. All in favor? That's unanimous.